Good evening. Before we begin our meeting, let's have a moment of silence to think about all of the folks around the world who are struggling in a variety of ways, both in our country and across the world, and the many conflicts, tensions, and troubles that afflict our current Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, if the clerk would be so kind as to call the roll.
We'll call for the meeting of June 3rd. Counselor Lane?
Here.
Counselor McCauley?
Here.
Counselor Preston?
Here.
Counselor Shand?
Here.
Counselor Wright?
Here.
Counselors Ead?
Here.
Counselor Dennehy?
Here.
Counselor Granis?
Here.
Counselor Harmon?
Here.
Counselor Khan?
Yeah, Counselor Khan is online. I don't think she's in a place where she can talk.
Okay. Counselor Cameron?
Here. And that would bring us to the late files.
There's four or five late files this evening. You've got the appointment, 569 of Kimberly Turner, 27 High Street, to the Mayor Andrew Curtis Fund Committee, till 7:15, 28, to go to Community Services and Committee of the Whole. Order 728, Water Sewer Rates, to go to Budget and Finance. Application 269, an A-frame movable sign for Charleston and Cocoa, to go to License and Permits. Order 729, a resolution in support of the Office of the City Clerk and the Mayor's update.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files.
Second. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselors Ead?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Point of order, I think Counselor Khan would be considered absent, so we don't need roll call.
I think that's the way to do it, yes. Thank you. Okay, so that's, those late files have been accepted. Public comment. So first, we'll have in-person public comment. If somebody remotely wishes to make public comment, please raise your hand as we begin. I see at least one person. And again, we're, if you can have your hand raised now, that would be preferable. And we'll come to remote public comment shortly. So we're going to start in person, so.
I noticed Counselor Khan, I don't know if she's. H-3 tried to promote her to panelist and allow her to speak, yeah. Otherwise, she isn't able to, I think.
She did not have her hand up. Okay. So we'll start in person, so up to two minutes. Newburyport resident or business owner, state your name and address, and something that's on our agenda for this evening. First up would be Jason LaCory.
Thank you all for reviewing tonight. I'm here representing Jason LaCory, 14 Hill Street, Newburyport Mass. Here representing Yankee Homecoming right around the corner. Been updating the packet regularly. Everything in there is up to date, the certificates of insurance. Ironically, when I put this permit in, insurance ends around May 15th, and the one for this year is up. We have all our reservations through the Parks Department. Been in contact with all the departments. Two weeks before the event, we'll have the mayor host a meeting with all department heads, police, fire, city hall department heads, to make sure everything's covered. Other than that, I'll be waiting over here till you review the permit, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you very much for reviewing this, and looking forward to another great year.
Thank you. Jason.
Lead us to Walt Thompson.
Walt Thompson, 100 State Street. If we were shocked by the infamous "very fine people" on both sides' response to Charlottesville in 2017, we should heed its clear echo in Newburyport now. Ignoring the investigated facts while displaying its immature arrogance, the current mayor in today's daily news said something about nothing in the report changes his, quote, "deeply held feelings," unquote. The mayor's hollow and sentimentality crumbles under the weight of documented facts, serving as little more than a deflection from the undeniable harm inflicted on archival center staff. Instead of confronting the irrefutable damage his administration wrought disparaging and undermining both paid and unpaid employees, he conveniently reframes accountability as an emotional disagreement rather than a matter of integrity. The public theater of age's disregard on display here isn't just negligence, it's calculated avoidance, assuring that real consequences remain elusive while reputations are smudged and discarded at will. That statement from the mayor follows a well-worn path of evasive political language, acknowledging grievances without addressing accountability. The phrase "deeply held feelings" is an Orwellian masterclass in noncommittal rhetoric. Side stepping the actual findings of the investigation while allowing all parties to remain entrenched in their own narratives. The comparison to the infamous "very fine people" remark demonstrates an attempt to neutralize moral clarity by treating documented wrongdoing as a matter of subjective perception, refusing accountability. Remember, end November.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Rita Mahalik. I live at 53 Warren Street, Newburyport. It never gets easier to stand up and to speak up at a city council meeting. I'm usually here advocating for historical preservation, but tonight, I'm compelled to advocate for another kind of preservation, preservation of our community integrity. I have read the complete library investigation report. I came tonight to express my deep concern and profound disappointment with the findings and culpability revealed in the library investigation report. The series of increasingly willful misconduct described in this report is shocking. I'm a resident, voter, taxpayer, and you're my representatives. I hope you will hold the responsible parties accountable for their actions and issue serious consequences. Don't condone this behavior from our officials, and don't encourage it by sweeping it under the rug. Newburyport deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reg Bacon. I live at 21 Strong Street in Newburyport. Going by the script for cogency, I'd like to speak tonight in support of the corrective actions proposed to address the shameful treatment of the former Library Archives Director and Archives Room Volunteers in 2023. I strongly support all six of the enumerated actions. One of those proposed actions is the restoration of regular hours and staffing in the Archives Room. I'm old enough to be long retired, but I continue to work as a professional in the museum in history field, still jumping through hoops, both independently and in projects outside the city limits, and on staff with Historic New England, a regional preservation organization. So I've been around the block in this life, conducting research far and wide, and even though only a small fraction of my work these days relates to Newburyport, I can say that in the years before the 2023 fiasco, the Archives Room at the Newburyport Public Library shined like a jewel above the rest, around the country even, not only for its well-organized holdings, but for its professionalism, service, and welcoming atmosphere. In my work for Historic New England, I routinely advise architectural historians, family researchers, and author historians on local resources. And for years, I would send these out-of-town visitors directly to the Archives Room, a premier one-stop destination for Newburyport research. And of course, these travelers from across the United States, they need to eat and sleep, and so they are also big spenders in our tourist economy that we all covet. So, over-the-top enthusiastic feedback about the attentive service at the Archives Room was the norm.
Mr. Bacon, you'll need to close it up.
All right, we've got another paragraph here. I used to tell people in advance that even though the Archives Room is in the basement with no windows, it's the sunniest place in the building. I haven't been able to say that for a few years. Let's see if we can remedy this by restoring access, regular hours, knowledgeable and welcoming staff, and volunteers. And beyond that, let's pursue the other proposed corrective actions out in the open to restore the reputations of those who were harmed and to get the whole story so that the shrouded machinations like this don't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Sarah Hall, 8 Arthur Welsh Drive. Following the trend here, I was very pleasantly surprised to see Order 727, the resolution recommending corrective actions following the library investigation in your packet for tonight, especially in light of the fact that when the executive summary was released a couple weeks ago, it was accompanied by the following statement from Council President, which reads, "The council has concluded that all tasks required by last year's authorizing order have been completed. Accordingly, the city council does not expect any further releases of information on this matter." Now, if you've read the full report, which I assume you all have, you know that the executive summary is woefully inadequate. So first, my heartfelt thanks to councilors Preston and Harmon for co-sponsoring this order. And secondly, I would like to urge all councilors to send Order 27 to Community Services Designated Committee Council of the Whole. Since Community Services oversees the library, this is the appropriate place for council deliberations on how to make amends for the actions and inactions from June 2023, which have had a lasting and damaging impact on the archival center, former Archives Director, former volunteers, and patrons. Councilors, I know that this has taken up a lot of your time and that it wasn't your fault. Trust me when I say I feel your pain. Your work remains unfinished, but with this resolution, you're nearly across the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. And that would bring us to online public comment. And Kristin Farrell, I'm going to allow you to talk if you may need to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Oh.
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Cameron, and thank you, councilors. I'm shifting gears a little bit here. Kristin Farrell, 28 Oxford Street. I am speaking to as a co-chair of the Commission on Disabilities, and we are really excited at the C O D, at the opportunity to present in your packet tonight the expenditure request for our new C O D to purchase two adaptive bicycles. Our adaptive bicycle conversation began this past winter and concluded with our vote to purchase these two bicycles on May 8th at our commission meeting. We are really excited to have the opportunity to purchase these two three-wheeled recumbent bicycles for use in the city's bike share program that will be newly piloted. And these particular bicycles are very well-developed. They are very popular among riders in the other municipalities that already own them. And as three-wheeled bicycles, they are more stable than two-wheeled bicycles of the typical sort. And as an added really nice feature, these two bicycles, these bicycles in particular can be joined together, the two bicycles, to be tandem. And in that configuration, a person without the ability to ride independently could ride tandem behind an able-bodied rider, so that's really a great feature. We are really excited to have these bikes available here in Newburyport, and the time-sensitive nature of this expenditure request exists because of our hope to have these bikes available right at the start of the bike share program, and because of the little bit of a kerfuffle with our meeting schedule between the winter and the sporting weekend concluding on our ready vote. So I'm going to stay on tonight, and if there are any other questions that I can answer when you get to this agenda item, I'd be happy to, otherwise, all good. Thank you all, as always.
Thank you, Kristin. All right, so that would be it for public comment. That would get us to the mayor's comment.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Pride. I want to thank everyone who came out on Friday for the flag raising. I want to thank Newburyport Pride, especially Tara Luciano, for all their hard work. The parade went off without a hitch on Saturday, so I hope you have a great month around Pride here in Newburyport. It's been a while since we've had a city council meeting. I just wanted, did want to recognize the Recreation Youth Center debt exclusion vote. I want to thank all residents for coming out to vote on May 13th. Again, it was about 61 to 39 was the final vote tally. It was nice to see such strong support from this project, a project that we've been working on certainly since day one that I took office. We had a first pre-construction meeting last week that ran really well between the architect, the contractor, and our project manager. We're still working this month on moving DPS Parks Division down to Perry Way, and then we're hoping to break ground come July 1st. Essentially, what's left at F-59 low right now is essentially just parks equipment, so we are clearing a space out of 59, and storage containers has been purchased. Mike Kennesi's office has been moved down to Perry Way for quite some time now. So we're, again, we're really excited about that, and we can't wait to get started in July. I also announced this week our new finance director, with your approval hopefully, that I've sent in for appointment, Amy Saro from, she's currently with the town of Swampscott as Finance and Administration Director there. She really just, we were really lucked out. You know, anytime you lose someone like Ethan Manning, who has, you know, left some pretty big shoes to fill, thankfully, he's going to be with us through budget, and then he'll move on to the schools, which I'm really looking forward to working with him on the school budget for next year, which should also be a challenging year. You know, of course, you're nervous about losing those key personnel, people on your team, so the fact that we were able to get someone as quality as Amy so early in the process, and then have her just come out of all of the interviews here, meeting with, you know, treasurers, assessors, team up at the auditor's office, and then, you know, with other department heads and mayor staff here, you know, we were all in 100% agreement that this was our next finance director for Newburyport. So I hope you feel the same, and I look forward to having her appear in front of you soon, and then hopefully, we can get that appointment approved at your second meeting so she can start on July 1st. Big correct, congrats to the class of 2025 who had graduation this weekend and senior week all last week. I get to attend a lot of those events, and, you know, it never gets old. You know, this was, I think, a really special class, and you felt that more and more throughout the week. So again, we survived the senior car parade on Saturday, and then we had a great graduation on Sunday with some three fantastic speakers. And I guess one of the best things I get to do is to hand those diplomas out, so that was a great time. In your packet tonight is the Inu Curtis Memorial Fund Committee members. I have made my choices. I have communicated with Council President. He will pick two members to serve on that as well. You know, we have no timetable when we'd like to start, but, you know, hopefully, you know, we get these approvals through in June, and then we can start setting up those preliminary meetings. We have been meeting with the trustees off and on. They're really excited about the prospects of working, you know, with the city moving forward, so, and they'd like to make an allocation this year, so that'll be the first on the docket for that group when they come together. Projects updates, streets, you can see, street sidewalk work is still happening all over the city. There's national grid work happening all over the city, so there's just a lot going on. You know, we are trying to be as collaborative as possible, not only national grid, but getting those, getting that information out to residents. And again, weather permitting, you know, you get a couple good days, you get a couple rainy days, it's tough to get the work completed. We do think that most of the street work will be done mid-June, which is great news, and the only one that will still be hanging out there would be State Street, and we plan on doing that mid-September and having that done by mid-October. So, and that will be the end of outdoor dining season is what we're going to do with that. Couple other big projects that are finishing, they were doing Striking down at Lower Atkinson Common, otherwise known as Pioneer League. That was happening this week, actually, I think it was actually happening today. And then tennis courts down at the middle school, nets are up. I think we're going to keep them closed off. I think the boys were hoping that they were going to play their state tournament match tomorrow on them, but I don't think that's going to happen. Sorry, boys, they'll have to win over at Penn Tucket, but they should be open very, very soon, and we're going to have a ribbon cutting for that. Speaking of ribbon cuttings, we do have an event coming up on Thursday. It's the Market Landing Maritime Sculpture Installation. It is called Sail Trace. I'm not going to go into too much details, but Aaron Stefan was the artist from Maine that put this together, and it's pretty awesome if you haven't been down there to see it yet. So we're doing that on Thursday. I hope you all can make it. Again, we had a couple different grants that helped pay for this, and again, we're just going to celebrate that. It's a really nice addition to that wonderful park that we christened last year. Finally, with the library investigation, obviously a hot topic tonight. I kind of struggled all day when I was going to talk about this, and I've certainly calmed down from what I wanted to talk about earlier. But I am going to read my statement, that's, it's been referenced a little bit tonight. I made it a few weeks ago, and I sent it to you all, but it actually isn't in the record really anywhere yet, so I'm going to read it again. "The situation with the library occurred early in my term as mayor, and is still one of the most difficult things, challenges I have faced. At the time, I said there would be no winners, and that remains true two years later. We still have former volunteers, many behind me, who feel they were treated unfairly, and library staff who feel they were subjected to inappropriate behavior. Nothing in the report changes those deeply held feelings. I disagree with Attorney Murray's main conclusions. Her review does not include important insight from the former head librarian, who, it's fair, she was, she chose not to be interviewed. I was opposed to spending $12,000 on the report, as I did not think it would bridge the divide between the two groups or promote healing. I want to be clear, the library staff had every right to report and express concern about alleged poor behavior by patrons and volunteers, and the mayor's office has an obligation to investigate and prevent the same. However, the use of a city asset to air those grievances was inappropriate, and upon learning of its posting on the library website, I immediately had it removed. As the mayor of the city, I am ultimately responsible for the city's actions, and I apologize for the posting of those complaints. The library dispute involved important and competing duties for the city, including an obligation to ensure a safe and supportive work environment, not to mention comply with the contractual conditions of collective bargaining, and our duty to serve and support the residents of the city, especially those willing to volunteer their time. Having held several volunteer positions over the years myself, I know how unappreciated it can feel. When this happened, when this happened two years ago, I met with both employees and volunteers at the time on this issue to find a resolution, and expressed my appreciation for the roles they play in making our library such a wonderful asset to the city, and I promise to continue to do so in order to bring closure to this issue. My administration remains committed to prioritizing the city residents while fostering a positive, respectful, and supportive work environment for city employees." And just to piggyback on that, I did meet with my good friend Liz Walsh last week, and I, and she is a friend, and I really appreciate her coming in and talking about this with me. This has been, this has been tough all around. You know, I'll be honest, I wasn't, I wasn't thrilled with the resolution coming in. I wish they had talked legal before they did that. I think it puts the city in a very tough spot. I think it's a violation of law and charter, and I know that's going to get cleaned up according to Council President and Council Harmon in committee, which I appreciate. So again, have a great meeting, and I will leave soon.
Thank you, Mayor. That would lead us to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes of May 14th, Communications, the following, Communication 646, the Firefighters Local 827, fill the boot drive for July 31st, August 1st and 2nd, between 10:00 and 4:00 p.m. to go to license and permits. The following applications, 265 to 34th Annual Walk Against Domestic Violence on 10/5 from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. to license and permits. Application 266, the Yankee Homecoming, July 26th through August 3rd, 2025, for license and permits. Application 267, the Greek Church Food Festival, July 25th through 27th, from 11:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and 3:00 p.m. on Sunday to license and permits. And application 268, Block Party on Lincoln Street between Beacon Ave and Marlboro Street on July 26th from 4:00 to 10:00. That's a new block party to go to license and permits. And the following transfers, all to go to Budget and Finance. Transfer 222, free cash to snow and ice deficit, $280,148.16. Transfer 223, free cash to fire overtime pro cert, $72,000. Transfer 224, free cash, police accounts to police electricity maintenance, $32,009. Transfer 225, sewer retained earnings to biosolids disposal plant chemicals, $250,000. Transfer 226, free cash to insurance consult services, City Hall, $92,600. Transfer 227, the C O D revolving to adaptive bicycles, $9,000. And transfer 228, rec services revolving fund, Perkins Park Shade Structure, $40,41.69. The following appointments, Appointment 556, Dickinson Gagman, 5 Tracy Street, to the Licensing Board until 7:15, 2028, to license and permits. Appointment 557, Catherine Prefetz, 6 H Street, to the Human Rights Commission, 7:15, 2028, will be our first reading tonight. Appointment 558, Ray Phelps of 18 Boyd Drive, to the Mayor Andrew Curtis Fund Committee, 7:15, 2028, to Community Services and Committee of the Whole. Appointment 559, Dana Remmer, 2 Moran Road, Mayor Andrew Curtis Fund Committee, 7:15, 2028, Community Services, Committee of the Whole. Appointment 560, Stacy McMillan, 16 Highland Ave, to the Curtis Fund, 7:15, 28, Community Services, Committee of the Whole. Appointment 561, Brian Callahan, 29 Warren Street, to the Curtis Fund, 7:15, 28, to Community Services and Committee of the Whole. Appointment 562 is the reappointment of Elaine Paglia of 39 Jefferson Street, to the Council on Aging, 7:15, 2028, to Community Services. Appointment 563, Amy Saro, 15 Kevore Street, Lynn, Director of Finance and the City Auditor, to 7:15, 2028, to Budget and Finance. Appointment 564, Rictainer, reappointment to the Planning Board, 10 Dexter Street, until 7:15, 2030, Planning and Development. Appointment 565, Daniel Simon of 11 Jackson Street, a reappointment to the Water Sewer Commission, till 7:127, to Public Works and Safety. Appointment 566, Justin Ditcher, 7 Moran Road, to the Harbor Commission, reappointment, 53128, to Public Works and Safety. Appointment 567, Barry McBride, 5 Pine Street, reappointment of the Assistant Wiring Inspector, 7:1527, to Public Works and Safety. Appointment 568, George Orenow, 19 Essex Street, to the Cultural Council. It's a reappointment till 6:1528. Tonight will be his first reading. The following orders are continued to a date certain, July, June 23rd, 2025. Order 722, a gift acceptance for the Vulcan Memorial Bench for $5,000. Order 723, a gift acceptance to Port Park Alliance Tree for $850. Order 724, a gift acceptance to Salt Box Financial for $2,193.33. Order 725, a gift acceptance to Pioneer Me for $6,000. The following items are removed from their respective committees with a motion of approval of the consent agenda, Budget and Finance. Order 716, transfers 219 and 220, Planning and Development. Appointment 540, Communications 633 and 645, and Ordnance 202, Public Works and Safety, Communications 269 and 641, and Order 710, and that is the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove Transfer 227. Okay, Transfer 227, no need for a second, we can just, any, all right, so that would...
I was going to do the same thing.
Transfer, okay, well, that's good to know. 227, remove. Also, I'd like to remove Appointment 567, Barry McBride.
I'd like to remove Appointment 564, Rictainer.
Okay, Appointment 564, Rictainer, removed.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to receive and file the mayor's update.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that would lead us to the regular agenda.
So your first item will be the Appointment 564 that was removed?
Yes.
Yes.
So, motion to approve on first reading, 564, Rictainer, to the Planning Board.
Okay, Counselor Shand?
Sure, so, Rictainer's been the chair of the Planning Board for many years, and he wants to continue on even though he's no longer the Planning Board Chair, as we don't have another... As we don't have another meeting with the budget season coming up, it seems appropriate just to go on and reappoint him. I don't think there's any concerns about his abilities. He is an asset to the community, and hopefully everyone else agrees, so, thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I just wanted to double-check that this date of 2030 is correct.
Five-year terms.
It seems, it seems excessive, but is that, is that what it is now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call on this.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
All right, yeah, Counselor Khan's still absent. Okay, so, that leaves us, Appointment 567?
First reading.
Okay, so, Appointment 567, Barry McBride. I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules and receive and file this. Just going to do it second.
Second.
Okay, he's, it's come to our attention that he has resigned his position, I think, effective today, so I think receiving and filing would be appropriate because he's not going to go.
Seems likely.
Any, was a discussion, so, motion, again, and I'm just jumping in because this was late-breaking news for me by making the motion, so, motion was waive the rules and receive and file. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Counselor McCauley?
Point of order, because it's waiving of the rules, I do think...
Roll call's a good idea, yep, roll call.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Next is the communication, Application 264, the ride to NALZ, June 14th, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m.
Motion to refer to license and permits?
Second.
The date is before our next, I assume there would be, is there an emergency?
Yes.
Motion to waive the rules, declare an emergency preamble, and approve on first reading?
Second.
There's no second reading.
Okay, so-called mega-motion made by Counselor Harmon, seconded by Counselor Preston, waive rules, emergency preamble, and approve on first reading?
Just approve. There's no second reading.
Just, just an application, not an appointment. Thank you, Counselor Wright.
Yeah, thank you. So, this is not a new event, they've been, this has occurred previously. You'll see in the packet that all the paperwork's in order. For those of you who are interested, the ride starts in Northampton, comes south, touches Newbury Port around the Chain Bridge, goes into West Newbury, comes back from West Newbury along Scotland Road, and they have a water station at the Newbury Port Professional Center. It's a, it's a 100-mile race at various paces, so it could take anywhere from half an hour to, you know, an hour, depending on the speed of the bicyclists, but they're all, you know, anybody that's riding 100 miles is a pretty adept rider, so we don't expect them to be in Newbury Port for very long, so I would appreciate a vote to approve.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
All right, yeah, Counselor Khan's still absent. Okay, so, that leaves us, Appointment 567?
First reading.
Okay, so, Appointment 567, Barry McBride. I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules and receive and file this. Just going to do it second.
Second.
Okay, he's, it's come to our attention that he has resigned his position, I think, effective today, so I think receiving and filing would be appropriate because he's not going to go.
Seems likely.
Any, was a discussion, so, motion, again, and I'm just jumping in because this was late-breaking news for me by making the motion, so, motion was waive the rules and receive and file. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Counselor McCauley?
Point of order, because it's waiving of the rules, I do think...
Roll call's a good idea, yep, roll call.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Next is the communication, Application 264, the ride to NALZ, June 14th, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m.
Motion to refer to license and permits?
Second.
The date is before our next, I assume there would be, is there an emergency?
Yes.
Motion to waive the rules, declare an emergency preamble, and approve on first reading?
Second.
There's no second reading.
Okay, so-called mega-motion made by Counselor Harmon, seconded by Counselor Preston, waive rules, emergency preamble, and approve on first reading?
Just approve. There's no second reading.
Just approve. Right, it's just, just an application, not an appointment. Thank you, Counselor Wright.
Yeah, thank you. So, this is not a new event, they've been, this has occurred previously. You'll see in the packet that all the paperwork's in order. For those of you who are interested, the ride starts in Northampton, comes south, touches Newbury Port around the Chain Bridge, goes into West Newbury, comes back from West Newbury along Scotland Road, and they have a water station at the Newbury Port Professional Center. It's a, it's a 100-mile race at various paces, so it could take anywhere from half an hour to, you know, an hour, depending on the speed of the bicyclists, but they're all, you know, anybody that's riding 100 miles is a pretty adept rider, so we don't expect them to be in Newbury Port for very long, so I would appreciate a vote to approve.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes. Yeah, I do appreciate Counselor Harmon's jumping ahead of me to do the same thing. Given that it is a time-sensitive issue with the end of, you know, the fiscal year coming up and budget season is like upon us, like, I mean, we're in it, and we know that budget is pretty heavy-loaded right now. I know it's only one little item, but it's one less item to have to really, you know, kind of hash out. I think having the COD co-chair on the phone right now is beneficial to us, you know, should any counselor have any questions that Ben or I couldn't answer, you know, I would prove us to ask now. The other piece, too, is that I do think it's relevant to have these bikes ready and available at the same time that we kick off the program. I think it's actually quite vital that we have that in place. The reason for that is for, well, a very simple sentiment is equity, right? So, we don't want to be an afterthought, we don't want to be something that appears to be, you know, oh, well, you know, we did this after the fact, or whatever, I mean, it just, we want them at the same time, it's only appropriate. So, that being said, it is the COD's money, they are the sole, you know, decision-making entity for the spending of that money. We are only here to authorize the spending, but it's their decision, they've hashed it out, this is what they want to do with a small portion of their budget, so I think it's a very good use of the money, and in my experience, 10 years on the commission, this is a very unique thing to come their way, and I don't see this opportunity coming again, and I think it'll go a very long way for inclusive activities for youth and adults when it comes to enjoying the many cycling trails we have throughout the city, so please consider approving upon this emergency request, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zed.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I just have a couple of points I want to make. First of all, I strongly disagree that this is an emergency. I know that we utilize that very easily and very frequently, but it does not actually rise to the level of an emergency. I will note, as a point of order, that by putting that as part of this motion, the motion has been elevated to a supermajority in order to be able to pass, not a simple majority, which is what we typically need. Second thing is, once again, I regret my vote on the bike share program, because part of the passage of that was predicated upon not utilizing public funds. The argument of the day was that we have a lot of things we need to do, and that we weren't going to expend public funds towards this bike share program, and of course, deals are very hard to make, and even harder to maintain, apparently, going forward. The third thing I'd like to mention is that I hear regularly, both on the council floor and elsewhere, that there are accessibility issues across the city, and it's not clear to me that this should be the top of the order. If we're just spending money, for the purpose of spending money, aren't there other more important things to be done to foster accessibility across the city? We're not probably going to have the opportunity to dive into that too much, but it's a question that can and should be asked. And finally, the word to counselors' comments frankly don't make sense to me. Of course, the city council is the authorizing body, so it is not the sole discretion of the NCOD on how they spend those funds, that's the purpose of this vote. We do have a voice, we do have a purpose, and our purpose is to vet things and to make, to look at things from the citywide perspective, and the NCOD is not unique in that perspective. It's why the Water Sewer Commission comes to us to set rates, the Harbor Commission comes to us to set rates, and all of them come to us to approve their expenditures. I will be opposing, thank you.
Okay, Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I have some question, thank you, Counsel President, I have some questions, maybe the sponsor can answer. The logistical questions about how these bikes will interact with the operations of the bike share, namely, you know, the original plan that we had approved had slots for five to seven bikes, these are three-wheel bikes, they're larger. Will the, will the vendor be able to take care of the bikes and manage those bikes as they will others to that degree? What I mean by that is storing the bikes, locking the bikes, tracking down the bikes, providing preventive maintenance on the bikes. Those are the things that we had approved as part of the bike share agreement. These bikes, in a way, don't fit nicely into that model, and I'm wondering if there's been any operational discussion as to how those bikes would fit into this plan. Thank you.
So, I don't, and I don't think Counselor Harmon was the sponsor, but you made the motion if you want to...
Sure, thanks, and I will defer to the Chair of the Commission on Disabilities. I believe the procurement is in line and potentially with the same vendor for the bike share bikes, so I can't speak to whether or not they're interoperable with the program, but perhaps we could allow Ms. Farrell to speak.
Okay. Kristin Farrell, I am going to find you. And, all right, Kristin, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, fine.
Okay, great, thanks. Yes, thank you for your questions. These bikes are operable with the existing bike share equipment. This was very carefully vetted, we have had conversations with the vendors directly and indirectly. The three-wheel bicycles take up two of the slots, but they work under the same operation, operational system, so it's still, they show up in the app, they lock and unlock with the Bluetooth, just as the other bikes all do. The vendor does, the operational vendor who is in charge of the maintenance of the bikes will also be maintaining these bikes as well, however, they will be owned by the Commission on Disabilities and performed by the city. This is not, this has definitely been carefully, all carefully strategized and planned, and I'm not sure if I missed another one of the questions. And then, just respectfully, Counselor Zed, of course, the city council does have operational say as to how the funds are expended, however, I would argue that this is not a vital use of funds, in your opinion, because I do agree that there are always opportunities to improve access throughout the city, however, to say that there are other things that are more important to spend money on, I think is a little bit disingenuous. I think this is a really good opportunity to spend what basically amounts to one quarter's worth of accessible parking violations, so I think we've been careful of any...
Kristin, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Khan, I believe I'm going to promote you as a panelist.
Yes, I am, sorry, I have on you now.
So, we can have the minutes reflected, 7:45, Counselor Khan joined. So, that was Counselor McCauley, Counselor Donahue, Counselor Preston. Counselor Donahue?
Was that me first?
Counselor Donahue, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, President. Well, this is a little surprising turn of events here, that I can't say I was anticipating any way, shape, or form, but I suppose nothing should truly surprise me in this room.
Point of order.
Yeah, Counselor, if you could just...
I'm going to get to, yeah, I'm getting to my point, and, and, what?
Just direct your, direct your comments to the motion.
Dis, disparage?
Yes.
What? I haven't even spoken yet. Oh, boy. You know what, I'm going to yield. You sick son of a bitch. Oh!
Counselor, that was out of order.
This entire conversation's out of order. How dare you!
Okay. Counselor Preston?
Ablest prick.
Wow, come on, Counsel President, you can't allow that.
I'm not allowing that, so Counselor Donahue, if you can't maintain the forum within the room, then we're not going to proceed.
Yeah, I have to say to people who are watching, I'm ashamed and I'm sorry. So, firstly, I will say that it was certainly...
I'm going to go to the public, I'm going to go to your microphone.
Your, so, I mean, it was a very clear conversation about the bike share program that we would not use public funds, and these are public funds.
These are not public funds.
Having, they are public funds.
I'm going to go to your microphone.
Okay. So, having said that, I do certainly see a good reason for us to explore having adaptive bicycles, but, you know, I'll be honest, my concern here is the emergency, because frankly, you know, we do have questions about this, and I did not anticipate an emergency, so I wasn't, you know, I didn't do a lot of research into this, I assumed it would go to a committee, right? So, having said that, a couple of questions that I have, so, one, when does the share program actually start, and, you know, how does that line up with this emergency? Let me just get through my questions, and I'll give you the floor. And then, where would these bikes be stored? I understand that, you know, should the program not continue, that they may go to RYS, but, you know, would they be stored at RYS in the meantime? Would the racks, so hearing that the bikes fit the rack certainly helps a lot, but knowing that they would take up two rack spaces, do we now have enough racks for all the bikes plus these bikes? And then, I would also ask, why in particular two? Like, why not four? Why not one? Why are we particularly going with two of them? Thank you.
Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. To answer your first question, the bike share, I've heard they're target, I'm not an official representative of the bike share, but I certainly support it, they are targeting mid-June to launch, and so the impetus for the emergency was to have these available[1741.38]
I'm sure there's probably some old questions, so sorry for the ambush, Councillor, but I'll be just really quick. I do appreciate that, especially if there's an emergency preamble here, we do need to go through the proper questions that many folks are asking here. I do think it would be a real benefit for the city to accept this gift and given that they accepted the bike share program. So I will be supporting this, and I, again, I just want to say we support the process of emergency preamble. I aim more than anything to understand why, and I'm sorry if I missed it, like, what was the need for getting emergency, and is it possible to send through the committee to have a proper conversation with possible, but it looked like this was a desire to maybe split the funds. But one other point I want to say before I yield the floor is that I did want to bring out another colleague here kind of being interrupted, and I do want to say, just by this floor, we do tend to say certain things, and we let it slide for some people, we don't let it slide for some others, and I do think that that was a little unfair and uncomfortable for me to watch. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Preston. Councillor Zied?
Yeah, thank you. So, a couple of follow-on questions for me. Firstly, we won't have a rec center by the end of this season, so if they're planned to be stored at the rec center, that doesn't totally follow logic with me. And then, the question, I guess, would, well, the question would be, where will we store them at the end of this season? And I guess a follow-up to that would be, why wouldn't we be storing them with the vendor? But I think, more importantly, so this, this concept of tandem-ing them, if I can make that a verb, is it particularly these two adaptive bikes have to be in tandem, or can an adaptive bike tandem behind one of the other regular bikes? And then, my other question, sorry, because I'm assuming we're going to go to Ms. Farrell, is, you know, while I understand two maybe seems like a good number, if I remember correctly, it's been a little bit of a while, I think we're going to have five, maybe six stations. So that means three, maybe four stations are not going to have an adaptive bike at them, and how will we decide which stations would have the adaptive bike and which stations wouldn't? And I just, that doesn't seem like it would make sense to me, but I'm not certain of the number of stations, but I certainly know it was more than two.
Okay. Kristin, are those, I think you should be able to talk if you unmute yourself. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So the first three years, for the duration of the existence of the bike share program, the storage is, the storage and the maintenance of these bicycles is the responsibility of the vendor that is operating all of the bicycles. So when they pick up all the bikes, they will take these two bikes as well. After the three-year pilot program is, you know, is completed, then at that point, it would be, if it's extended, then that will continue. If it's not extended, then at that point, they would then go into the physical possession of the city, which would likely be at the rec center, as Councillor Preston, you mentioned. I, I actually, that's a really good question about can the bikes be tandemed to a regular bike, so I will follow up on that. I made a note. I don't have the answer to that. I never thought to ask it, obviously. So I will follow up. And as far as the locations of the stations, this is pretty common practice to have a lower number of three-wheeled bicycles compared to two-wheeled bicycles, and because they are visible on the app, they don't always go out of the same station and get returned to the same station. You could rent it, you could remove the bike from the rack on Parker Street and put it back at the waterfront. Ideally, at the start, they will look, where they will be located are the two bike locations that are closest adjacent to parking areas, because in theory, someone who would be using adaptive equipment would want to access the three-wheeled bicycle, put their own adaptive equipment in their vehicle, lock their vehicle on their merry way for the ride, and then come back to the same parking space. But that's not always guaranteed. They could start at point A, and then at point B, it leaves the bikes somewhere else. However, the future users could see where they were, so that accessing those would not be problematic for people. And I think I covered all of your questions, but I'm happy to answer any others as well.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Kristin. We'll leave you able to speak. Councillor Granis, and Councillor Zied?
Thank you, Councillor Granis. For Ms. Farrell, just a couple of questions. Are the bikes that, for tandem use only, like, are they able to be used alone, or do they, must they be attached to another bike? And secondly, is there going to be a special way for residents to take this specific bike out so as not to be, like, abused or used by fully able-bodied folks? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Councillor Granis. No, they're not tandem use only, so they can be used independently, just single use from one rider. And there are not any special way to rent them. Someone who is able-bodied but is not comfortable with their balance could rent it on the app as long as they have their membership and their fees are paid the same as everyone else's. It's a safe procedure that you would open the app, choose the bike that you're going to rent, and the app would tell you, give you the code to beam me up, Scotty, and unlock the bike. So it's, it's a safe procedural process.
Councillor Lane, you had your, or Councillor Zied most recently?
Yeah. I just, just going to make a recommendation to the council as a whole to bring down the temperature to maybe put this into committee, because it seems like a lot of unknowns, and I think it's a great idea. I mean, I, I understand the reservations from everybody, but I'd hate to see this fail tonight and be gone, so, I don't know. That's just my recommendation to the council.
Okay. Councillor Zied?
Thank you. I just want to address a couple of things. One is the money. So I don't understand personally how there could be a debate about whether these are public funds. They're public funds, that's why the Newburyport City Council is dealing with them. I hope that's fair. Second is, there seems to be no recognition that we made a deal here that we were going to do the bike share without the use of public funds. It's on tape, it's in minutes, there was an amendment, it was voted on, and it doesn't seem to matter. So to my colleagues, I ask you, the next time we have that vote, what is one supposed to do? I mean, the whole point was, a bike share seems like a nice idea? Great, got a lot of stuff to do in the city, also not so great, and so the balance point was, get this done. Why doesn't the vendor provide these bikes? You know, if it's important, why wasn't that worked in? It's interesting to hear the timeline about how this has been worked out over many months, many months after the council agreed to do the bike share without the use of public funds. Again, go watch the tape, you don't have to take my word for it. I don't understand how to work together if we're not consistent, and if we make some, if we make something go based on certain parameters, and then we simply just ignore those parameters in the future, how is anybody supposed to work in that environment consistently?
Councillor Harmon?
Thank you. I reviewed the tape and felt that this was different from an investment in the bike share because it's an investment in our kids with disabilities, and it's, it is, it does not belong to the bike share program, it belongs to the city. We have rail trails that will be here ostensibly after the bike share pilot where these bikes could be used, but I understand and respect the Ward 1 councillor, and I just want to be clear that my, my interpretation is different. That doesn't mean that I don't want to abide by the rules and the agreements that we set. I just did not see this as being in direct opposition to that. Secondly, I worked to bring this forward tonight as, just to state, there is precedent for that. This previous council, I believe, did approve on emergency preamble an accessible beach chair on the summer of 2023. So I had hoped that the council would also want to approve this. With all of that said, and I appreciate my colleagues, for sure, the questions are relevant and helpful, but with that, I will withdraw the motion.
Motion's been withdrawn. And Councillor Khan, you have your hand up. Kristin Farrell, you might have had your hand up from before.
I put my hand down, just because it's been a minute.
Motion to refer to budget and finance?
Second. Motion made to refer to budget and finance, made by Councillor Zied, seconded by Councillor Preston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vocal.
Roll call. Oh, yes, I forgot. There you are, right in front of me.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zied?
Yes.
Councillor Granis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes. Thank you. That would, I believe, the other transfer is removed.
That was the only one.
I don't believe so.
And there's just a second reading appointment?
Yes.
It's appointment 5:52. B Heidi Neufeld, 10 Orange Street, to the Cultural Council, it's a reappointment until 6:15:28.
Motion to approve on first reading?
Second.
Excuse me, isn't that a second reading?
Second reading, sorry. All right, second reading, motion to approve, made and seconded, discussion. Okay, roll call.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zied?
Yes.
Councillor Granis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Okay.
Lead us to orders.
So there's the orders that are the date certain?
Motion to approve collectively, Order 713, gift acceptance, City Improvement Society, 2,500. Order 714, gift acceptance, Monchon Bank Park Bench, 5,000. Order 715, grant acceptance, Safe Grant, 7,462.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to collectively approve Orders 713, 714, 715. Discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zied?
Yes.
Councillor Granis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes. I'm sorry, Councillor McCauley?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion on Order 717 to invoke emergency preamble and waive the rules so we can dispose of this with the receiving file.
Okay, second or second? Second, Councillor Granis? Yeah.
We had, we had addressed this in the poll hearing. This was belt and suspenders to make sure that we could cover this, and simply I'd like to dispose of the, of the item.
Councillor Zied?
I guess I'm just not clear on what the vehicle's going to be to actually approve the, the poll, the work. Is this, is there another, another item?
So, they submitted the poll hearing, they submitted an order that doesn't have a number that just sits with them that we sign, he signs, that.
Okay.
This is sort of the front-facing order if you needed to discuss it further.
Right, but we, we should vote on, on that. That's actually the action. This is just the poll request. So I would just suggest in the future, you, you don't need a, anyways, we can talk about it, and maybe in point, at the end, a good of the orders, and, but I would actually recommend we just use this as the vehicle to approve the poll. Because if you were seeing file, there's, there's nothing left.
No, I'll amend from receiving file to approve.
Yes, all right, so motion amended, second is in favor of that? Okay, so it would be to approve, and, yes, just, just as a point of information, that's what I was asking in, in the poll hearing, because there is, there's an order language, but it's very different than our typical order, and then there's like a petition that they seem to be state forms, so, anyway, belt and suspenders, this will accomplish the saying. All right, so motion on the table is to, or motion on the floor is to emergency preamble, waive the rules, and approve. Any further discussion?
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yep.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zied?
Yes.
Councillor Granis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes. That will lead us to Order 718.
Motion to approve. With a emergency preamble and waive the rules and emergency preamble.
Okay. Second?
Sure, I'll, I'll be the second.
Made by Councillor McCauley, seconded by Councillor Lane, so emergency preamble, waive the rules, and approve for Noble Street.
Thank you, Councillor President. The work's been done on Noble Street, and so, again, this is more belt and suspenders. During the Streets and Sidewalk Plan, we continually pushed for a plan that we can share with the public going forward. In this particular case, we kind of, sort of got a plan, and so they needed to finish Noble Street from the sidewalk and the curbing that they did. There's an end and a connection point on, on to Story Ave, which itself is asphalt as well. I think they have done a very nice job, and it turned out very nice, nicely, and I think the residents are happy. Again, this is just to try to connect us to where this is going forward, and, and I ask for your approval tonight so we can put this behind us. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Lane?
Yeah, thank you for that, and that's exactly what I would, what I would say here. And it looks great. I just wanted to thank the DPS and everybody that's been involved. If you haven't been down Noble Street, it is a thousand times safer than it ever has been, and it's actually nice to see families walking through these, you know, through the sidewalks, and maybe in the future, you know, like I've said in the past, Ward 6, we'll take all your asphalt as long as we get sidewalks. It's safe, it's efficient, but I'm, I'm real happy with the way this has come out, and just wanted to thank the DPS, so, that I yield, and I obviously support it, so.
Thank you. Councillor Zied?
Thank you. I'm going to oppose this with prejudice. I, I'm glad it worked out this time, but oftentimes it doesn't, and so the city council's a doormat, and we basically say, okay, you already did the work, no worries, we'll give you the money after. Oh, you already did the work, no worries, we'll approve your waiver after the fact. The council has got to get assertive and start saying, you've got to come to us before you spend the money, before you do the project, and you need to come with us with clear, consistent information that we can follow from meeting to meeting, quarter to quarter, year to year. Right now, every other week, it's different information. Most of the time, the work gets done anyways. Sometimes it works out, and the residents are happy, and for that, we're thankful. Oftentimes, it doesn't, and it's a dumpster fire, and there's no way to unring the bell or undo the work, and it just becomes one of those, that's on Newburyport moments, and there's no way to pull it back in. So it doesn't deserve an emergency, and it doesn't deserve to pass as it is. Again, they already did the work, maybe there's good reason to do that, we'll never know. It's ridiculous. I yield.
Further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
No.
Councillor Zied?
No.
Councillor Granis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion collectively to refer Order 719, FY26 revolving fund spending limits, and Order 720, FY25 revolving fund spending limit increase to budget and finance, and for, for just for belt and suspenders, committee of the whole on both.
Second.
So motion collectively, budget and finance, committee of the whole for both orders, 719, FY26 revolving spending limits, and 720...
You know what, Mr. President, may I keep going?
Sure.
I'll add to that. Order 721, animal control municipal agreement, intermunicipal agreement, also budget and finance, committee of the whole, and Order 726, municipal fee schedule, budget and finance, and committee of the whole.
Thank you, Councillor, and that was seconded by Councillor Harmon. Okay, discussion? Okay. Hearing none, roll call.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Motion for order 727 to community services and committee of the whole? Second.
Counselor Preston? I'm your sponsor, I'll go after.
I just want to introduce you.
Please.
Thank you. So first, let me just say, I think the mayor is under the impression that I put this resolution together with Counselor Harmon to provoke him, I, quite frankly, that is not at all true. I really wish we hadn't had to put this together, because I really wish the administration would have just done these actions on their own, without me and Counselor Harmon having to put together the resolution. I want to be very clear that these are recommendations for consideration of these corrective actions, not demands. The mayor did make a comment that the resolution is in violation of the law and the charter, as has been made clear to all of you from the email from Attorney Spatafor. We did have a meeting, Counselor Harmon, myself, Council President Cameron, and Ms. Spatafor yesterday, and we had a conversation about this. I certainly was not left with the impression that we are in any violation of law or charter, specifically because these are recommendations. I mean, you know, the pushback was that this was related to the council being directive to staff, and again, as recommendations, I do not think they are directive, because they really truly are not demands. However, having said that, we did have a conversation, and I think we should work in committee to be clearer in the language, that, well, yes, they are recommendations, but be clearer in the actual action items, that they are more of a recommendation nature and not anything that is being demanded of the administration. Because indeed, the council cannot direct city employees, including the administration, and the work in these corrective actions is work that needs to be undertaken by the mayor and the administration, not by the council, and we need to be very clear about that. And we will have that opportunity to do that in committee as we work on the language. I also think it's really important to say, the one thing that also came up in the conversation is that we need to be extremely careful to be clear that the resolution is not in any way retaliatory to a, anyone who could be considered a whistleblower, or who would have put grievance forward from the union, that is, not at all the spirit of why this resolution was put together, and I want to be very, very crystal clear, and I have asked Attorney Spatafor to attend when we bring this into committee, to be certain that we have language there that will be very clear with that. One other thing I think we should really consider is an apology letter from the council itself. Well, obviously, none of us were, you know, named in the investigation, or involved in the activities that happened around this very unfortunate incident. We are a part of the city as well, and I think we, as a body that represents the city, should also consider our own letter of apology to both the volunteers who were so wronged in this process, as well as the former library archivist. And with that, I'll say that I look forward to the discussion in committee. Thank you.
Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. Thank you to my co-sponsor. As she described, there are some elements in this draft that, after reviewing with the solicitor, I can't support in their current form, but my takeaway from that conversation was that we would be able to modify and address those issues in committee. I look forward to doing that, and I also appreciate the council president for arranging that meeting in a timely manner so that we could have that discussion prior to tonight. I also want to say, I think, you know, all parties are trying to do the right thing here. I know I am. Two wrongs don't make a right, so whatever we land on with this resolution, I want to make sure that that is something that we stand behind, and that doesn't, you know, further expose the city or city employees to any negativity. I'll just add also that procedurally, I think this is the right step. Any large-scale product, project, or product launch that I participate in typically involves a retrospective or an after-action review. We, as a council, approved the funding, the investigation, the release of a summary of the investigation, and I think from a process standpoint, it only makes sense that we would say, and now having completed that, here are some recommendations or suggestions that we think are good takeaways, so that we are learning from what we found and applying new approaches going forward. That is the spirit of what I was hoping to accomplish with this, and I look forward to the discussion in committee.
Further discussion, Counselor Zede?
I just have two things. One is, I would really like to ask if the sponsors would consider, there's two of them, to get the city solicitor to give us the recommendations in writing, either in the form of a red line or stated comments, rather than Mickey mousing around back and forth, and so that the rest of us can also understand what their concerns are. Because one of my questions was how, what are the concerns, right? The email did not provide any detail, or just said there are concerns, so writing would be helpful. And the second one is, just want to remind everybody that per our charter, resolutions are passed by the council by a bare majority and are not transmitted to the mayor for signature. They are simply passed by the council. I've gone over this on the CIP, which is also adopted by resolution, so there is no threat of veto. It's irrelevant.
Yeah, thank you. Further discussion?
I just want to address the first concern. So in our call with Attorney Spatafor yesterday, we basically had that conversation, and she is going to give me some edits, because both Counselor Harmon and I sit on community services, so we can communicate about this, once it comes to committee, if we should vote to bring it to community services. But we did talk about that. She will get edits, and as I mentioned, we've asked her to attend when we bring it into committee as well, to be absolutely certain we get the language right.
All right, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call on referral to community services and committee of the whole.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes. Would bring us to late-file order 729, which is a resolution in support of the office of city clerk. We'll, folks, some of the audience members are going to leave here. As the sponsor, I'm going to make a motion, hopefully that's in order, to refer this to general government and committee of the whole.
Second.
Okay, thank you. The purpose of this is really to help set the stage, help the reset between the clerk's office and the administration, and, you know, I appreciate the efforts of Counselor Khan in assisting me in drafting this, and we've discussed this with Clerk Sullivan and with the mayor, and I think this would be, you know, having this go to general government would be a proper forum to help those discussions, again, with the eye towards making sure we have solid, transparent, professional relationships and interactions between departments, and this reaffirms the independence and the special nature of the clerk's office in its relation to the city council. So I think, I think we can make some progress here, and this would be a vehicle to do that, and we would have this at the next general government meeting, which is two Mondays from last night. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call?
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes. Thank you. That would get us to ordinances. Ordinance 206, municipal fee schedule?
Motion to send ordinance 206, amend municipal fee schedule, appendix B, to Public Works and Safety.
Second. Made and seconded, McCauley and Granis. Counselor Zede?
I just wanted to record that budget and finance just adjusted a big municipal fee schedule update, so the worst thing we could do is pass one and then immediately pass the other and not get them synchronized, so I'll work with the Public Works and Safety Chair, if this is where this is going to go, which is fine, to try and harmonize them so that we can capture their changes into the broader one. Because if that one passes first, and then the other one passes, we're changing it and then immediately changing it back.
Thank you. Further discussion? So referral would be to Public Works and Safety. Hearing none, roll call?
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
That would lead us to committee items, budget and finance.
Motion to approve transfer 219.
Second.
Transfer 219 is a general fund free cash, $16,700, being transferred to veterans benefits in the same amount. The reason for this transfer, the committee met on May 15th to discuss, is that it was really related directly to one veteran who stayed on the roster, if you will, for benefits. There's a chance that person may come off the roster, as they say, either retroactively or at some point in the near future, and if that occurs, then this transfer, you know, can either be transferred back or undone, but in the meantime, the city is obligated to provide benefits, of course, to these veterans at a rate of 75% in the end. So we get, pardon me, at a rate of 25%, with 75% being reimbursed by the state, but before the reimbursement happens, we need to outlay 100% of the cash. So we pay out, and then each year, on the so-called cherry sheet, the city gets reimbursed that 75%, and so that leaves the outstanding amount as 25%. It's one person, it's an obligation we have, with good reason, to provide these benefits. The committee said, ended up at a 3-0 vote on this. I'd recommend it to you.
Hearing none, roll call?
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Next up is a motion to approve transfer 220, general fund free cash, $41,500, to City Hall and Planning. City Hall Studying and Planning, same amount.
Second.
Okay, so we had a fairly robust conversation about this. Again, on May 15th, we had Kim Turner, Special Projects Manager, presenting this to us. It is a project that has been in the CIP in some form or another, relating to City Hall in various flavors for some time, and it is in this year's CIP, which we are in the midst of trying to adjudicate. This transfer specifically is for a PCA, which is a property condition analysis, and it is something where the idea is, behind the $41,500, they'd be able to go through the report and provide, the deliverable would be, go through the building, pardon me, and the deliverable would be to provide a report that is supposed to look at the building from top to bottom, so to say, and side to side, in terms of assessing the sort of the exterior of the structure, and then all of the systems inside. I do understand, or we do understand from the conversation, that there will also be some other aspects to the study, such as wayfinding within the building, people finding the office they need to go to, the potential idea or concept of exploring how offices are being utilized and how space can be done, space can be used most efficiently, and so forth. We did have Counselor Khan ask if sustainability would be part of that conversation, and broadly speaking, the answer was yes. And then we got into a conversation about the condition of the roof and the recent work that was done to repair the two offices that are down here, namely Planning and Assessors. So the 41,500, the last thing I would just say is, this is to a firm called Wimkis, which I think is a name that now we've heard a few times, the schools may be engaging with them as well, and so this seems to be part of that broader PCA mantra, I guess, if you will. It was two to one, was the dissenting vote. I'm going to rest on my committee report, and then I'll rise again to speak for myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lane?
I'm just curious, in the breath of, we've heard this name a couple of times, is this going through procurement properly? So has this gone out to bid, to the right channels, or are we just giving this company business illegally? Just curiosity.
So Ethan Manning? And also Christian Seer, if you're still here, I'll make you a panelist, but, so Counselor Lane's question was about procurement?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, so Counselor Lane's question was about procurement for this transfer, so the $41,500, and how that's been awarded or plans to be awarded.
Sure, so architectural services for a study such as this, actually exempt from NPL Chapter 3B, that said, for something in this range, our standard practice would be to solicit at least three proposals, which would be the case in this scenario.
Okay, Counselor Lane?
Could you give me the price of the other two that came in? Just $41,000 seems like a lot for, there's the Assessor's Office, here's the council, the roof is horrible, we know, we know there's mold, so were there other prices that you could share with us?
I can look into that for you, Counselor.
We have them, right?
Yes, I did not, for instance, they do exempt, I just do not have them on view. I just saw them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McCauley, Counselor Zede?
Yeah, I just, I have a question to the budget and finance chair through budget and finance. I was wondering, I'm asking a generalized question. This transfer 220 is in our this year's CIP, right, and it's going forward, and it's sensing to me, as I look through transfers 222 through 226, that what we're getting is a last-minute supplemental budget? Is that a consistent read, or, I know we're doing a lot of transfers at the last minute here, last minute meaning end of the year and cleaning up some things, but it appears that it's free cash to this spending, and, you know, when we talk about budgets and we talk about running out of money, then you need to get a supplemental budget to go forward, and it usually comes from free cash. And I'm just looking if, looking to see if the committee actually had that discussion with the administration, or if they can have that discussion in the upcoming transfers going forward. It just, it just seems the timing of all this stuff is crushing, right, for some of the work we have to do. Thank you.
Counselor Zede?
So just to answer the question, no, we did not directly have that question, that discussion. We're happy to have it. Most of the items, other items are committee of the whole, or you're welcome to come and join us and ask those questions. A lot of these transfers, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but a lot of these transfers are deficit spend, or there's a deficit in the line, but not in the category, so, yeah, they're trying to balance the books here at the end of the year. Some of them are fairly normal, like snow and ice, and some are not, but we are trying this new model with capital, where we didn't do a big capital transfer, but it does feel like we're doing some measure of that, apparently.
Thank you.
That's all I can offer. May I continue, Mr. President?
Please, yeah.
So I just want to explain my dissenting vote on this. I want to read to you, because every week, I'm going to bring the receipts from the nonsense that I've been told in the past and try and square it with the nonsense that I'm being told now. So in 2022, when I sat in this room, quote, "The shingle roof section of City Hall is past its useful life and has now moved from a regular maintenance expense to an emergency repair expense." Number two, "City Hall is in need of major mechanical systems upgrade. The heating system boiler is over 30 years old, and maintenance has been costly." That was three years ago. I can go back to prior CIPs and find the same. My question in committee is the same as my question before. When a building needs a roof, why can't you just do the roof? Why do we need study after study? It seems to me that the current modus of operation is, you just kick it off, kick it down the road, but in order to sort of pretend like you're doing something, you do a study in the interim, because then it looks like you're doing something. I don't understand this. Everybody knows that the roof is garbage on this building. Everybody knows we've experienced damage now, which we were told was being covered entirely by insurance, but actually, there's a transfer that just came in to fund at least part of it, so we'll have to have that conversation, and it closed offices for six months. And everybody talks constantly, especially in the winter, about the quality of the boiler and how hard it is to keep running in the bubble gum. So there's only one of two things that can be true. That information is wrong, and it's being provided incorrectly to us. Either it's being exacerbated or embellished at the time, maybe to make it seem more important, or the information is correct and the new information that I have is wrong. It can't always, always be true and vacillate between being an emergency problem that must be resolved immediately, too. You probably have three to five years on this. And so I don't, and I, I just would remind the council of one last thing. Almost a year ago or so, we had a similar study request to do the space allocation in City Hall, and at the time, the city council said no, but just keep bringing the same idea back in until you get a yes, and maybe that works. I urge counselors to reject this. The message to send is, maintain your buildings. When they are failing, just replace what needs to be replaced. Start separating out broader, bigger things that you want to do from what is normal things to take care of. If you are in your house and you see water coming in through the roof, I don't think you need to do a study about whether your bedrooms are being most effectively used. you need to do a study about whether your bedrooms are being most effectively used. You need to replace the roof.
You, Counselor Preston?
Thank you. I have to say, the counselor actually makes a lot of sense on that one. So I would love to hear from the administration. We have been hearing for a very long time that the roof is bad. You know, we need central air, the boiler is 30 years old. We know that the Planning Office and the Assessor's Office have been out of their space for several months, if not six now. So it does seem odd to me that we need yet another study to understand that we need a new roof and a new boiler and central air. So I'd love to hear from the administration as to why we need another study on this.
All right. Director Manning, and then we'll call on Counselor Khan. Ethan, I believe you are still a panelist.
Sure, I can speak to this. So we go over this in committee. This project does appear in the capital program. I think the reason that the administration wanted to move it along quicker was, you know, we all know what's going on in City Hall. I think the roof is one of many, you know, challenges for the building that needs to be addressed. That said, I think with the insurance point, the roof is going to be in a living room space and should not need to be replaced immediately. So I think the approach of looking at the entire building with the roof being part of the process really makes sense because I think if you just, you know, replace your roof, if you know that the rest of the building needs to be looked at as well, I think the goal is really to look at it comprehensively, holistically, to really get a better grasp of what's going on in the building and try to put together a capital plan to address those needs accordingly.
Counselor Preston, then we'll turn to Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Director Manning. I understand what you're saying, but again, I don't think, it's a question mark in anybody's mind anymore that we need a new boiler and we need central air and, well, that we need better HVAC systems and a new roof. So while I appreciate your answer, the question really is, why do we need a study for that? To me, it seems that what we need is to go out to a roofing company and get, well, several roofing companies and get quotes on new roofs, as well as go out to HVAC companies and get quotes on HVAC systems for City Hall, not spend $41,000 on a study of these things. We could put the $41,000 toward the new HVAC systems or the new roof as opposed to another study. So why in particular a study?
Sure, maybe, I first we heard of the special projects manager on this, you know, and I certainly started, right? Like, you know, that said, I think the, this is a very complicated old building, has a lot of moving parts, I think. You know, if you work in any of the offices, we all have our own, you know, single day weekends, they're highly efficient, the building, the windows are outdated, office space is a harsh pouch, I think that, as we all know. I think, I think really the only way to understand the building needs is to bring in an outside consultant to help work us through it because, yeah, we can get the quotes and trades, but I think to say, yeah, we need central air and what kind of central air, what kind of solution is left to replace the boiler? I think there's just so many different questions that come up when you look at one of these particular projects in isolation. I think it really definitely makes sense to kind of look at the study to really understand better what we're dealing with.
Okay, Counselor Khan, and then Counselor Lane?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Preston. I do support this in committee and I will continue to support it. This study first came up, actually, I think last year when we had some free cash after we certified it, we were trying to, there were certain projects, and I felt like this came out of the blue and we didn't support it at that time. However, since then, as we see in the transfer we just accepted tonight was we lead to City Hall, and we have a breakdown from the highway maintenance report on all the things that are being done for City Hall right now that are just mainly trying to put band-aids or fix things kind of on a ad hoc basis. I do think it would be a fiduciary responsibility for us to invest in this study, and while it's at $40,000, to make sure that we're not putting money in for roofs and some other larger capital like kind of what we see as the widgets that need to be taken care of or these single individual items without getting a holistic look at the historical building that we know has several other deficiencies. So I think it's going to be, I think it's actually really prudent of us to approve this, to see holistically what can be done, what's going to be needed from in terms of a planning of the different things that are going to be done in the roof. But there has been damage done. That needs to be assessed. We can't just put a new roof in without recognizing what the impact has been to the rest of the building. So to me, it seems like a smart decision. It's a historic building. I think we can all recognize and appreciate it, and I think this is a good investment to make sure we do some wise spending moving forward based on the results of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lane, and Counselor McCauley.
I'm actually going to go the exact polar opposite way of what the Out-Large Counselor just said. All of us here tonight in this conversation have just identified every single problem in this building. I don't see a purpose for spending $41,000 to Riemkis. I don't know, I'm going to do my homework on them. I don't know why they keep getting all of these study requests. There must be some sort of reason or some relationship there that we're not seeing. Aside from, you know, the only thing that I could see is maybe a structural engineer for the building that we haven't addressed. But any HVAC company is going to know with, that does any kind of business in your report, a roofing company. Counselor from Ward One just mentioned that it was complete failure, and now all of a sudden, it's not that bad because of the insurance. I've never seen a roof fix itself because of an insurance claim. So I just think, yeah, in the same breath, these studies are a waste. This is a complete waste of $41,000. Bring in a structural engineer if you're concerned about the historical integrity of the building, but past that, we all know the problems. You can get any one of five HVAC companies to come in and do all of these. I know that Counselor McCauley had brought it up. If we're going to be studying HVAC systems on one building, get it done on the rest. It makes complete sense. That way, we have a dedicated person down the road who is a company that is familiar with what we've used, it's similar technology. So, I mean, again, I'm rambling on, but I'm just dumbfounded by that we keep hiring this one company for another study for $41,000. It's just wasteful here, wasteful there, wasteful everywhere. So I'm going to obviously oppose this.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor President. I have a question as to the timing, right? Is, why do we want to do this now as opposed to making this part of the CIP, right? It's the number one item on the CIP list going forward, right? And so, and possibly putting it in the CIP is a time, you know, is, there's a transfer now or a transfer later, right? It's a potential timing issue. But if it's in the CIP, then it's tied to a much broader five-year plan, which would include all of the items that we've spoken about, right? It should speak about the roof, it should speak about HVAC, it should speak about office layouts, it should talk about all of those types of things. And I just, I'm curious as to why we want to, we want to move this up a month, right, from where we're going to approve it, right? Are we going to approve it in two weeks or three weeks or something like that going forward? And I'm trying to understand why the rush to get this in as a transfer now as opposed to a, as part of our CIP deal. And I don't know if that was discussed or not.
Okay, Counselor Zied?
Just, I don't, I can't speak for intent or things like that, that maybe somebody could speak to that, but I will just say two things. One is, we were told that upon approval, if approved, it's about a three-month cycle to get the report. Three months would be the timeline to get the report. Number two is, this is a free cash transfer, so I have to imagine there was some desire to put it in before it freezes until November, I guess. And number three is, just to be very clear on the CIP, there's $41,500 in the current fiscal year listed and $798,000 listed for next year for the roof. So for example, there's no boiler on the horizon in the next five years. So again, I don't know how you can make sense of that, but I'm just reading to you what the study says, what the plan says, the CIP says.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. So the motion on the floor is a motion to approve that was made and seconded, and we would have a roll call on Transfer 220.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Grandis?
No.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Okay, that fails.
Last order of business is Motion to Approve Order 716.
Second.
Okay, I'll do my best to unpack this one for you. So this is a gift acceptance in the amount of $163,674. It is a gift from essentially the state of Massachusetts via NEVA, our Merrimack Valley Transit Authority, to the city and more specifically, the Council on Aging. It is for a bus, specifically a front runner, pardon me, it's to replace an existing bus, it's a front runner bus without a ramp. That bus is from 2013. It is on its last legs, as we are told by the CLA Director who appeared at our May 15 meeting. And so the way that this program works is that the state offers you the grant. They have a, for lack of a better term, a menu of buses that are, it's not like you just pick any bus. There's about 10 or 12 buses on the list that are sort of approved under this grant. And then the city made a decision about which one to apply for. It applied to the state to hopefully win this grant, in this case, won the grant. And so with this $163,000 plus some more, which I'll explain in a moment, they will be able to purchase this bus and put it into service. The order would go in, I wrote down June 1st here, but it will go in, obviously, upon grant, hopefully, maybe it's already in, you never know, but it'll go in when it goes in. And then there's no hard date for it to go into service. It's just a matter of waiting for delivery, which, as we know these days, can be all over the place. It is an all-gas vehicle, and I think they tried to assess other options. That kind of came forward, was there an electric vehicle option? And in this case, they said that the grant was also the one that sort of pushed them towards this vehicle. So I maybe don't know exactly how that works, but that's the kind of status of things. We did have a conversation about MasDOT holding the title for the vehicle because that's inside of all of that litany of paperwork they provided. That is, I guess, how they do it. We surmised or guessed that maybe they were financing these things, but that's unknown. But the city would continue to use it, we would be responsible for maintaining it, ensuring it, all of those different things. So the last piece is that the $163,000 is not the total amount for the bus. That represents 85%. The remaining 15% does come from the city, and the 15% is coming from another fund, which is not included in this, we're not voting on it. And that fund is, we'll get about $28,000, we'll come out of it. It's called the Council on Aging's Annual Elder Affairs State Funding Allocation. So that's money that comes into the city, goes to the CLA. We did have a brief discussion about why isn't the Council approving that, if that's a funding request. According to the Finance Director, that money is spent at the authority of the Director and does not require, does not require City Council authority, pardon me, City Council approval to be spent, so they're just going to go ahead and do that. Clearly, it's replacing an existing vehicle, so with that, the committee came to a three to zero recommendation to accept the grant.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call on Transfer, excuse me, Order 716.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Grandis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Dunn, I'm sorry, Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
That's it for Budget and Finance for tonight. Thank you to everybody so far for all of your time that you've invested into the budget. Our party continues this week. We have tomorrow and Thursday budget workshops. We are continuing, having shifted gears from CIP into budget. I want to confirm to you all again and to the public, June 18th, 6:00 PM will be the meeting. I'm working with Council President Cameron on, I'm drafting a very tight agenda for that night so that we have times and we hopefully are able to move the meeting on in a reasonable amount of time and foster a good and quality debate. So we'll have that to you soon. The Council President will also serve you notice officially of that special meeting shortly, and the hearing ad has already gone to the newspaper. We, all of our meetings frankly are subsumed into budget, but because of the litany of work that budget received tonight, I will be adding at least one meeting in conjunction with my colleagues, Counselor Khan and Counselor Wright, possibly two. Some of the matters are committee of the whole, so I'm going to just have to fill you in on those. I apologize in advance, it may be very hard to find a time that's not with something else, so we may very well end up like in the basement of some building. It'll be publicly noticed and all that, but just at a time when another committee's meeting, I apologize in advance, it's just best efforts, the best you can do. So that's it for budget. Thank you.
Counselor, Community Services?
Yeah, thank you. We have nothing coming out tonight, but we will be meeting this coming Monday, June 9th, and we do have all the appointments for the Curtis Fund as well as Council on Aging, if anyone is interested in joining.
Thank you. From General Government, there's nothing in the agenda to come out, however, I'm going to, on Appointment 549, I'm going to make a motion to waive Rule 7F, which allows a chair to remove from committee, and then I'll mega motion it, make a motion to receive and file that appointment. So this is Diana Carey.
Second.
All right, so thank you for the second. And basically, this has been in committee since late, late April. We did have one meeting on it, so this is to fill a vacancy on the Board of Registrars. I would love for the clerk to correct me as I get anything wrong here. So it was to fill a vacancy of a registered Republican who resigned before the end of her term. There was some confusion initially, and the clerk, this clerk has done a good job of educating us and showing us the State, Secretary of State guidance on appointing registrars. And while we could appoint a Democrat if it was filling a new term, because it's a person who resigned prior to the term expiring, it does need to be filled by a person from the same party, i.e., for Republican leaves, it needs to be replaced by a Republican; Democrat leaves, it needs to be replaced by a Democrat. Assume that also goes unenrolled as well, although they just talked parties in the actual Secretary of Commonwealth Guidance. So for that reason, Diana Carey, who is a Democrat, would not be a fit for this position. Likewise, the reason to seven, waive 7F is it's starting to get closer to our 45-day deadline on appointments, and we would not want to have somebody automatically appointed who is not suitable for the position, not because of anything of their fault, but because of the requirements of filling that. So that's, that's why I'm asking for the, waive the rules and vote it as a receiving file. Any discussion?
Should be all independents anyways.
Okay. Can I just add a point of order? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to look at the Charter quickly, but does a receiving file the same as a rejection? Does a receiving file count as an action? Does that make sense? Sometimes it says that the council acts and sometimes it says it's not approved. Those are different things.
Robert's Rules. Don't.
It's a Jeopardy question.
I think, I think it's in the Charter.
It is in the Charter. It's in...
It's 210. Oh, yeah, or 33. So it says, unless approved or rejected by the City Council, so the motion unfortunately need a motion to approve and then Counselors can vote how they wish.
Okay, I'll modify that motion to, Appointment to Approve.
So, just to be very clear, so a receiving file would not satisfy the Charter, in which case, the appointment would go through after 45 days. So the Council needs to take an affirmative or negative vote on this, up or down. So the correct, there's no such thing as motion to not approve. It's motion to approve, you vote nay, and then if you wish, of course, and you end up with the outcome that you end up with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the motion will be to approve. Everyone's understanding of that? Any further discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Grandis?
No.
Counselor Harmon?
No.
Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Okay. That's all coming out of General Government for tonight. That would lead us to licenses and permits.
Nothing to report out of the committee. We had one application that was not, doesn't need to be resolved, that's still in committee. It's a November event. We have our own ordinance that's in committee. However, the respite has been brief. There's a number of items in licenses and permits, so we will be taking those up at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on next Wednesday at 6:30 in amongst the hustle and bustle of budget season.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. That would lead us to Planning and Development. Counselor Shan?
Thank you. Motion to approve Appointment 540, Stephen Moore.
Second.
So Mr. Moore wasn't available for his public hearing, but Director Port did speak on his behalf. You know, Mr. Moore's been on the committee for many years, and his willingness to continue serving is a testament, his desire to continue serving the community. So the committee did vote three to zero for his approval.
Okay, further discussion on Appointment 540, Stephen Moore. Hearing none, roll call?
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Grandis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
All right. I ask you all bear with me on this one. Motion to do an emergency to approve, emergency to waive the rules and approve Ordinance 202 on first reading tonight, and I'll explain in a minute.
Second.
All right, so this is the zoning amendment for the FEMA maps. The reason for waiving the rules is because the state, as always, needs something official from us before the actual date that we have listed here. from us before the actual date that we have listed here. Director Port, who is unable to attend tonight since he is covering another meeting, was explaining this to us at our last meeting, but that is the reason for us to do it tonight. He needs it before, he needs something to give to the state before our next committee meeting. So that's the reason for the emergency. The zoning amendment is the FEMA maps. It is federal, there's nothing for us to change here. I think if y'all had had an opportunity to look at them, I think it was in our last packet, the only changes to the maps were at Cashman, Cashman Park, almost said Cushing. We'd have real problems if it was Cushing.
Could be someday.
You're right. So anyway, a couple of other items that changed after our joint hearing with the planning board was if you look at the next, what it changed on that second paragraph was it went from City of Newburyport to Essex County and the City of Newburyport, and then the other language that was added was after the first July 8th, it was or with earlier dates as indicated on the corresponding flood insurance rate map index also dated July 8th. So those are the changes we got after, from the planning board. I think the gist of all of this is we need to get past this so people can have insurance. If you go through the, the changes, and I will defer to the sponsoring counsel, counselor here, the bulk of the changes you will note are in, I'm going to botch this too, in section three eight, I believe, and it, sorry, three, 13 C D, the establishment. So you see all the new zones there, and I will defer to the sponsoring counselor to go through the other items that changed in this as well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Preston.
Yeah, I mean.
And we have, we have Director Port as a panelist if you, if you need.
Oh, yes.
I didn't want to give you.
No.
All right, Director Port.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the, a lot of these changes is captured here that they're required by a federal direction management agency or applied to the national flood insurance program. So a lot of it is terminology, but they require now very specific wording regarding their fund. In essence, it does not really change a whole lot for us. I think it's, as I mentioned, attached in part, and then by Strickland are the only notable areas that we see any sort of changes related to the boundaries of the flood zones. They did a river area, so we were, essentially, they did not do, apply it from the downtown to that area. We would expect maybe, you know, five years, show years now, we might see something from that. Well, obviously, we'll hopefully hear something sooner, but those areas did not change. Most of what is changing here, other than some minor adjustments in the boundaries of the flood zones here, is in essence, the text of the ordinance, which requires us to designate a floodplain administrator. In this case, the building commissioner already signs off on building permits, obviously, in around the city, and so we have that review process that's essentially automated with the planning department to review for compliance. So in essence, there's a lot of legal ease and terminology if anybody wants to drill down into it, but in essence, they all the terminology that they've made changes to our explicit terms, the way that people want us to define them.
Thank you, Director Port.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Zede?
I just have two things. So one is, I mean, I've been on the council long enough to have done this a couple of times now, but, you know, the original memo said, you know, as noted in the attached two letters, the updated maps referenced and incorporated within the zoning amendment must be adopted with confirmation of FEMA prior to July 8th, 2025. So that's different because the ordinance is different evidently, there's two different deadlines. I'm just trying to justify in my mind the emergency.
I'll, I'll explain it. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Director Port, why don't you go ahead? Go ahead.
Yeah, just briefly, we had received late notice, later than we originally had that. Obviously, that's the deadline, and that's had to take effect. We need to have that for FEMA. However, we had heard from FEMA, the liaison to FEMA, one of the ones that we work with, that they wanted to be able to report back to FEMA sooner than that. I think it was the 16th of this month. I advise them that based on our current acting and the spacing of council meetings, it would not be likely, but we would try to ask for waiver of rules and vote on one reading so that we would be able to report back by the 16th. They are trying, yes, FEMA is trying Massachusetts as an agency. It's hoping to report back in a more package format to the federal government all appliances in Massachusetts. So that is the reason for asking for this, so that there's a clear and unambiguous capture with FEMA that we are in compliance prior to the July 8th deadline. It's probably because of the used to bureaucracies on the federal side of this.
Okay, so with that in mind, I just want to first ask, clarify the motion. So is the motion to waive the rules and approve this in only one reading, waiving the second reading? Or is it to, because you also didn't have it in the packet, so that's one waiving of the rules? Unless I missed it.
This is in the packet.
Oh, ordinance two oh two, okay. So you're waiving the second reading? That's the, what you want to do? Okay. So the only thing I want to say is that, I actually have never really understood this because they come to us and say, you have to do this stuff, and then, but you can't change any of it, even if you disagree with, say, the flood maps. I had that argument early in my career. It's a waste of time because they don't care. But it does have a profound effect on properties in the zone. I mean, I happen to be a homeowner in a zone, so I can speak from that experience, but I also have the ward that has, you know, a lot of experience with this. So, for example, the, the insurance is incredibly expensive and, you know, covers relatively nothing in the grand scheme. FEMA taps out at $250,000, for example, for a structure. So if you've done any building projects in the state in the last 10 years, you can't build a lot for 250. So, and people on the island, for example, or some of them are paying 40 to 60,000 dollars a year for that coverage, which if you just think about it, paying 40,000 dollars for 250,000 dollars of coverage is really an illogical thing. But if you are, you know, as many do, carrying a mortgage on your property, typically the bank will require you to carry that flood insurance. So it's a big web, and my point is, is that it's largely been, not ignored, it's not the right word, that's not fair, but it's largely been just, we just do it, and we need to do it because people need to be able to buy that insurance, because if you don't, then the banks halt and the market grinds. But as this continues to grow, people in Cashman may be very surprised to get a letter from their bank saying, you need to buy flood insurance now that you never had to carry, and then they'll be absolutely floored when they see how expensive it is relative to your typical homeowner's policy to cover fire and the other normal stuff, normal, and obviously they always exclude flood. So I just want to, you know, to my colleagues who are welcome to the party, you know, I do think this is something that has to be confronted at due time, and we are hamstrung because they, again, don't let us sort of contend or contest when there are things we don't agree with. But if you're a homeowner and you get plugged into an A E zone or a V E zone, for example, it's, it's very meaningful to you personally. So I just wanted to say that. It's, it's important to do this. I don't really love it, but I just wanted you all to understand what it means for, for somebody who owns in the zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing non, roll call? So just to be, so waiving the rules on.
Whatever he said.
On, waive the rules to approve in one reading.
To approve in only one, to waive the second reading.
Right.
Motion to waive the rules to waive the second reading.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion to receive and file communications six thirty three and six forty five, communication regarding the FEMA maps.
Second.
Obviously, these are now overcome by events since we passed the ordinance, so we, committee voted three to zero to receive and file.
Further discussion? Hearing non, roll call on receiving and filing communications six three three and six four five.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
All right, so we will be canceling our meeting schedule for next Tuesday because of budget. With that being said, we do still have signage that should be coming out the end of the month, and we also have our scheduled joint meeting with the planning board for the two items on zoning for Low Street on July 16th. That's a committee of the whole item, so July 16th, planning board. That's it for us.
Thank you, Counselor Shan. That would lead us to public works and safety. Counselor McCauley?
Thank you. Motion to receive and file communication six twenty nine.
Second.
Thank you. I'd also like to ask you to refer to page three nineteen in your packet, because it's going to make my life a little easier trying to explain this, right? So we had a discussion with the consultant, B S E Consulting, as well as our D P S staff and project manager, Jordi Vining. This is actions to protect the water, wastewater treatment facility. You'll see from the memo, we've spent $40 million in processes for a million gallons of water a day, or sewage a day, et cetera, along the way. It's vital that we have this. We spent money on the revetment, but, you know, physics, when the waves come, the water goes around the sides from the revetment and floods in going forward. So this is a plan that's been in the works for a couple of years now, through planning and some feasibility studies, et cetera, along the way. And if you look very carefully, there's a black outline on that that circles the entire plant. It goes, it goes along the, it goes along the rail trail up front, along the water. It cuts down along the access street that goes to the yacht club, and it comes all the way to Water Street, and then it takes a series of angles and then goes behind people's properties along Water Street, comes back out again where the entrance to the water treatment, the service entrance to the water treatment facility is, takes another series of right angles behind people's properties, and then connects back to the, to the rail trail where the two clarifiers are going forward. And the plan is to put a wall, a fence that's built in to the ground, that is there permanently. There will be some temporary sections for entrances and exits of the facility, but this will be a five-foot, six-foot-high wall, depending on where it is, going forward, to prevent the water from coming in. I do want to note that where the clarifiers are, they do not plan to put up the fencing right away. They plan to put up a berm going forward because the clarifier is a secondary project that comes along with this going forward. They want to put the third clarifier in and build it before they fence it all off going forward, but that's not part of this discussion, but it is part of the plan. So they've built a, a temporary wall to keep the water out while they get funding and the finalization of the clarifier plans going forward. Also, and they did have an abutter meeting and got some pretty interesting conversations. The design costs are 680,000 administration, is 120 escalation of 5 percent a year. The total of this is 4.4 million dollars. We'll see it in the C I P going forward. This was really a way for us to be educated on the project a little bit deeper in the C I P and be able to ask questions. So besides the walls that are there, I just want to add to some clarification here that within the boundaries of this fence here, there will be two very large pumps that will pump, pump any water that gets over the walls or inside this perimeter going forward and pump it back out, hopefully back out onto the merrimac going forward. We're hoping that sea level rise, in, you know, in these types of instances, it'll be a flooding incident, that we can pump it back over the fence and, and in higher levels and not have it come back in, but there are alternatives to that. And as part of this project, if, if that's not enough, there are some drainage lines that come from some of the collecting streets, as you can see in the south end, and their, their piping actually goes right through the plant. And so part of this is to reroute those lines that go through the plant to around the perimeters of the plant to go out so it doesn't have backwater flooding coming in from the river as the water rises. All in all, the, this should be the driest place in Newburyport at 14 or 16 feet of water going forward, and it is critical because of the sensitive nature of what they process there in its location. So no one liked the price tag, per se, but in the scheme of things of, you know, previous investment of 40 million and having tons of raw sewage in the merrimac in a disaster, they had educated us that 4.4 million is probably a reasonable amount of money for us to try to invest, and by the way, that would come from ratepayers as opposed to general fund going forward. So with that, I ask you to approve a receiving file that is two to zero in committee.
Thank you for the explanation, Counselor Zede.
Thank you. I just need to speak on this because it's in Ward one, and I was at the abutter meeting. A couple of things. One is, I'm not sure where the, the C I P shows this project at 5.2 over the five years, so.
Must be an escalation.
Yeah, whatever it might be. Interestingly, I do think there's a bit of a disconnect with the timeline that some people are thinking and what the C I P says. I mean, this puts it in FY 29, which means, talking about 2028, but the project is really, having met with the project manager and the engineer from B S E, which is a third-party designer, I mean, they're more or less towards the end of the design, and so the project will be, you know, that famous term shovel-ready, but isn't slated to go until 2028, and that's sort of at the earliest. So that's the first thing I want to say, was cost and time. Second one I wanted to say is I just wanted to focus in a little bit on that clarifier conversation, so there are, they're, you know, separate but parallel. I know I mentioned this in the budget, but those two big circles on the far right of the picture, those are the existing two. They want to add a third one. That was always spec to be part of the plant, and so they're making some temporary things on the argument that a berm instead of a wall would be less expensive to remove and replace with a wall when and if the clarifier comes on. But the clarifier project is also moving at, on its own steam and likely actually will be shovel-ready at, at about the same time, so then the bottleneck becomes pricing and desire, right, to complete. Last thing I want to say is that, two things. One is, it's a well, so I just, you know, you use the term fence and wall, but it's a well, and then it's a fence outside the wall to hide the wall or make the wall less unattractive, because it's basically a concrete thing with these, you know, almost like a sheet pile thing. Their presentation, they considered three different options for how, what material to use. They decided on, you know, as usual, it's a, it's a matter of cost, it's a matter of installability, disruption to the neighborhood. They don't want to drive piles, you know, with all the homes around. So the wells, though, for example, when it comes to Water Street where the rail trail is, most people will know that if you're going to the A Y C, the well is two, like two feet off the ground. So it tapers significantly as it comes to Water Street because the grade is moving like this, so it's not a six-foot wall on the Water Street end of things, and then they've got these two huge panels essentially that they would close into the plant in a storm event. So the last thing is, most important for me, which is just speaking for my neighbors, my, my constituents, there is real concern about, particularly on the bottom right of this image, that they don't get essentially killed because you want to make an island in the middle of all this, and then you have a wall, so you've got like a swimming pool outside of it. So we spent a lot of time talking about that. The engineer makes some compelling arguments, but I do think that we identified a couple of considerations that they could make. In fact, ironically, in a high-water storm event, one of the biggest risks is actually water coming back from the river up the drain pipes and coming up the, up the sewer and up the sewer pipes and then up the, the manholes that may exist. And then, to the counselor's point, they have pumps inside because, you know, usually be raining a lot, right? So you're filling this thing up in the middle, and then you've got to pump it out. Is that just coming around to the neighbors? So I want to just put a plug in for them that, you know, they really do deserve this consideration. This kind of project is often talked about on the island and never allowed because you can't have walls on the island, but on the same river, just a little ways upriver, you So I wanted to get that out in early and that that would have an adverse cost effect, right, if you add another, if there's more to the project, but I think they deserve that because they're abutters, and if you want to do this project, you need to be fair and sensible to them, as we are with any project. So I think the drainage and the backflow prevention is something that, to me, seemed cost-reasonable and doable based on conversations with the engineer, and I hope that they will consider them before they say plans are done and then we have a different fight at that point, so.
Thank you.
I yield. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion to receive and file. Hearing none, so the motion was made to receive and file Communication 629, Wastewater Treatment Facility Flood Walls, roll call.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zede?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Con?
Yes.
Motion to receive and file Communication 641. This is National Grid Smart Meters. This is notification from National Grid to the city that smart meters are coming, smart meters are coming. It's known as advanced metering infrastructure going forward. There are benefits to this, more ways to, for a homeowner to evaluate and control their energy use and spending, improve reliability, invert, advanced technology to track consumption. How they want to put it in is they want to build little Wi-Fi lands throughout the city going forward. They originally want to put it on poles. We do have a challenge where not everyone is above-ground utilities. They also have underground, so that'll be a challenge to them. This is going through all of Massachusetts. It's over a five-year period, but they, once they start, they want to do them within three to six months of when they're coming. Also, you know, we chatted about this, is that there is a darker side to some of these smart meters that go forward, and we should be aware of them as we talk through that, is that some places, it's been seen in some places like California and Texas, that utility companies use smart meters to meter down electricity consumption in some people's homes at pricier times. They manage the grid a little bit better going forward, but that may mean, for example, on a hot, stinky day, that they meter down electricity consumption, limiting air conditioning, and so that, let's say, electric vehicles can be charged at night and things like that. So everything isn't just great with smart meters along the way. We do have to have some protections going forward, and we should have those discussions as they come forward and give us more details as how they would like to do that. But all in all, it's really informational, and we should take it for what it's worth. And we approved it two to zero in committee.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counsel Zede.
I just would like to ask, I don't know if the chair knows this, but will the infrastructure that gets installed on poles have to come through the city council? Just, you know, I'm having flashbacks to the, you know, the 5G thing, and that was a nightmare that we never actually figured out. The demand dried up before we came to some conclusion about what we could or could not approve or not with that. What was it, TCPA or something? It was the Telecommunications Act of 1990-something. Very complicated.
So these, most of these would be on national grid poles, right? So they were single-use, so we probably would not have to approve those going forward. We could make it an issue that we could, that we'd want to be advised as to when they're going to roll it out, where they're going to roll it out, and the type of the equipment. We could probably make that demand going forward of them. I don't see why we couldn't do that, but, you know, part of that argument is that they own those poles, and we don't tell them to put which transformers to put on or breakers or things like that going forward today, and this would simply be an extension of that. That's their logic. And again, if we'd like to make that adjustment, then we should write them a memo, et cetera, along those lines.
Just to follow up, I think it makes sense to ping the city solicitor and just ask the question, you know, get ahead of this instead of waiting. Again, for counselors who aren't here, when 5G was rolling out, we had a glut of companies that came in, they're tower companies, so they're not Verizon, but they put the towers up. As a counselor here, knows a lot more about this business than I do, but they came in, but they wanted to put huge stuff on the thing. It was like the size of a Toyota Corolla, right? And we had lights on them and all this that could be disruptive to abutters, and we went back and forth, and then there was a lot of questions about whether we could charge fees, whether we should charge fees, if we were supposed to inspect them. So I think in the interest of, you know, the pictures look very small, but I don't know, right? It might be worth it to ask the city solicitor if they're seeing something statewide that there's a way, if this is coming to all of Massachusetts, we can't be the only ones that maybe have this thought or this question. And if we're ahead of it, because again, I was chair of Public Utilities at the time, it was just a web of legalese and federal law and state law and DPU, the Department of Public Utilities. Very challenging.
Myself, Chair McCauley, and Counsel Zede can connect, and who's the point of contact for the city for this? Is it Wayne?
They actually sent it to Chief of Staff.
Okay. Loop them in, and we'll make sure we frame the question properly to the city solicitor. Yeah, the diagrams, you can't really tell exactly what this, you know, it's either the extender or the Cisco piece there, so, okay. I made a note of that. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call on receiving and filing Communication 641.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zede?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Con?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Motion to approve Order 710.
Second.
This is the belt and suspenders of the poll hearing that we had that could, we had some questions that didn't be answered. As part of my field trip that I went to Plum Island, I also went to Dexter Lane with the National Grid engineer, and he took different measurements and confirmed them and spoke with both the transmission folks on his side, the phone Verizon for their lines, as well as the contractor on site, and got everything aligned. It was off slightly, got everything aligned, so this is ready to be approved from us going forward.
Okay. Further discussion? On Order 710, poll hearing requests for Dexter Lane, roll call.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zede?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Con?
Yes.
Nothing further, just want to remind everyone we're trying to have our meeting Monday. And going forward, the Ward Two counselor asked that we put on the brick sidewalk ordinance changes going forward. We'll try to do that, and I will circle back with her, but for anyone listening, that could be on the agenda for the 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to the order.
Could I go back just to ask the chair? Appointment 554 for the Special Police Officer Kevin Martin is, could you just give an update on this? Because, I mean, I'm just looking at it thinking, could we take it up tonight and vote on it? Because he was an officer for 30 years and...
None of the three of them showed up, so we'll, so I took them all back and we'll address them.
I just didn't want, it's detail season, and they could probably use it, but I get it.
Could I make a point? Just please be aware that 420, that Appointment 541, you're at the 42 days today.
Yeah, I understand, right, the 42 days, but as I explained to the Chief of Staff for the administration, this is the second appointment, this is the second meeting that he hasn't shown up for, so either I was going to bring it out and with no approval, or and ask them to resubmit, or if they would allow us to, you know, try again, right? So that, hopefully, we can have that cooperation, but thank you.
Okay. But can I ask a question? So then, wouldn't he just be...
He's just on.
But he'd be appointed if we missed the 45-day window, right?
Yeah.
Kind of changes the way you look at things.
Counsel Zede or Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, so one of the unintended consequences of our new meeting schedule is that if somebody like this misses an appointment and a discussion going forward, that sometimes it's really tough for us to catch up to the 45 days. It just is for people scheduling and the whole thing. And so, again, I had asked the Chief of Staff in that meeting, because I didn't want another, oh, by the way, it's a 45-day type of thing, and he's on automatically, et cetera, because I said I would take him out tonight, and we'd vote him down so they could reappoint him, et cetera, along the way, right? And again, we're trying to be cooperative in this process.
Counsel Zede?
I respect the chair's position. I just, I don't think this is like a handshake thing. I mean, the charter says you have 45 days. We just did this with the other one, so I think the two options are, you let it go and you accept that it's an approval, a tacit approval or indirect approval, whatever you prefer, or we bring it out and we vote on it, up or down, and, you know, with or without the conversation along the way. So the gotcha is not anything anybody wants, but the rule is written hard. It's not a, you know, unless you agree, it's more than 45 days.
Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I tend to agree. I feel like we should bring this out and either say yes or no to it. I frankly would be inclined to say no for someone who didn't bother to show up twice for their reappointment, but, and the administration certainly could resubmit them if we were to vote this down, but I agree that, given that we have been on the pointy end of the stick with the 45-day thing before, a very, very, very pointy end of a stick for me, I would prefer to bring this out, vote it up or down. Again, I would be a no on it, but the administration would certainly be available to reappoint.
Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I'd like to invoke Rule 7F and bring out Appointment 541 for a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counsel McCauley to involve and waive Rule 7F and approve, and that was seconded by Counsel Preston. Discussion. Counsel Shan?
Quick question. When we don't have those come for their public hearing, we have the opportunity of having folks speak for them, maybe the Ward Six counselor can speak for them. Just a suggestion.
This is the Water Sewer Commission.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
We think it's Ward Six.
No, we're talking, well, was it the 45 days on the special police officer during?
No. Thought you knew both.
I don't know the first one.
Just to reappoint the Water Sewer Commission.
Which put...
Counsel?
I just think this puts us in such a bad spot with this 45-degree, 45, yeah, 45-degree, 45-day rule. I mean, I hate to vote no because he hasn't shown up, but he's a reappointment, and I just don't, you know, and without, I don't know which way to go here.
Counsel Shan?
Quick question. Do they have quorum on June the 11th?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel McCauley, then Counsel Preston.
Yeah, so I will, I do know the individual. I'm not going to impose that because I'm the chair going forward on that, and I will abide by whatever the council, the wish of the council wants to be on this. And I agree that I thought I had, you know, a handshake agreement on this, but if we want to be firm and reestablish boundaries as were established with us, then I will abide by what the council wishes. Thanks.
Okay. Counsel Preston?
Just really quickly, for the Ward Six counselor, I mean, to be honest, if we vote him down, the administration at our very next council meeting could bring them back, and then we could be compelled to vote him in once he does show up to his reappointment. So it's not like if we say no, there's no path to victory here.
Right.
But, you know, I again am inclined to say no because he has not bothered to show up, but everyone has their own vote.
Further discussion?
The motion's just to waive the rules to bring it out, correct?
Yes.
Not to approve it?
And approve.
Oh, and approve it?
And approve.
Okay. Any further discussion, Counsel Zede?
Yeah, on the approval, I'm going to oppose as well. I would like to ask the waiver of the fees for the Kmart project, just to confirm my understanding, this individual was there and voted yes to waive the fees or to reduce the fees.
Yes.
I'll oppose. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Oh, sorry, Counsel Con?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in. To me, what's, I think, the issue with this is we do have a process of coming to committee, and the fact that they didn't show up, so I would be voting no as well, but that is really the reason, and hearing about the tactic that we could just reintroduce, but there is a process, and that is a courtesy that I would expect to be followed. Thanks.
So just a point of order, if we're voting on both, you vote no, you don't bring it out, so you can't really lump these two together.
That's a good point.
You have to bring it, you have to vote to bring it out, and then vote on the appointment itself, because if you do them both collectively and somebody says yes, you're voting for the person as well. So I would say split it up to bring it out in one vote, and then vote.
I'll amend my motion to waive the rules, invoke 7F, and bring the appointment out.
A second to that.
So you're...
Just to bring it out.
Just to bring it out.
And then vote on the underlying afterward.
And that's waiving 7F?
Yes.
To bring it out, okay. And Counsel Preston agrees to that?
Yes.
Who was the second on that? All right, so the motion is to waive 7F, bring it out for approval or not approval? Further discussion, roll call?
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zede?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those favor, roll call.
Motion to approve Appointment 541. Counsel McCauley? I'm sorry, Counsel Lane?
No.
Sorry. Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counsel Preston?
No.
Counsel Shan?
No.
Counsel Wright?
No.
Counsel Zede?
No.
Counsel Granis?
No.
Counsel Harmon?
No.
Counsel Con?
No.
Counsel Cameron?
No.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to the order.
My fellow counselors, our council meetings are run under the rules of Robert's orders. I have the right to have a point of order when I believe that one of our rules has been contravened. That order can and should interrupt debate. I was never recognized or given the opportunity to be recognized because of the outburst of the counselor from Ward Two, followed by very derogatory terms addressed towards me specifically. I hereby ask that you, as the council president, censure her formally, and I demand a formal apology. Thank you.
Thank you. Take that under advisement. Counsel Zede?
Yeah, good of the order is the time, under Robert's rules, to address the health and well-being and operation of the body, and first and foremost, I want to support my at-large colleague. I'm not sure what came across on the microphones online, but I'm in the room, and I can tell you that the point of order, in my humble opinion, I'm not the president, but was in order, and the statements that were made afterwards were wildly inappropriate, and I don't understand, you know, we're supposed to debate the matters at hand, and that's not how the statement began, and I am equally frustrated. I don't like that the counselor felt that they had to leave, but at the same time, the behavior is just, you know, we need to debate the issues and stay on track with that, so I want to publicly and openly, you know, support my at-large colleague in his request.
Thank you. Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I'll jump in here as well. I agree. You know, we debate a lot of things hotly. We, you know, have challenges that we don't all agree on things on a very regular basis, but, you know, it is wildly inappropriate to be frankly calling each other names and quite derogatory names because a counselor doesn't necessarily, you know, agree with your particular stance on something. So I do think it was fairly egregious and should be considered. Thank you.
Counsel Con?
Yeah, I think online, it's hard to know what was said, but I will kind of just add, though, as someone who sits in with this group and this body, doing very uncomfortable conversations that many of us have done, that have also been, in my opinion, some outbursts, maybe they're directed at administration or the people who have spoken, and I just want to make sure we're consistent in who we're censoring or who we're feeling like we're, and again, sorry, nothing came across as, and again, maybe that's what I'm missing because I'm not in the room, but it just seems that someone who's here online or who else is also zooming into this meeting, we didn't hear exactly, and so that's why I want to say that it didn't seem consistent at all. And all I ask is we all just be a little bit, in general, if we have this sentiment of how we should all behave, let's extend it, not just to our colleagues here, but how we talk to other people too.
Okay. Okay. Further the order?
One related topic. I wanted to ask my colleagues if they could give me some guidance about need or desire to see the city solicitor during a budget workshop or on the 18th. Yes, we'd like to have the city solicitor there. No, we don't need them there. I can send questions. Can I just get some feedback or guidance? Because if we would like her to be present, I would like to extend the invite as soon as possible. We flirted with a question, a lead question at one of the workshops, you know, can you cut, is this allowed to cut, you know, what's a contractual obligation, what's subject to appropriation? So I'm just want to, again, make that night as fluid as possible. So would you like to send me questions? Would you like her to be present in a workshop? Would you like her to be present on the 18th? Or some combination of all of those through the president?
Okay.
Would you like to motion to reconsider for Appointment 549 because it was not separated? So you have now waived, you have voted against waiving the rules because it was combined for Diana Carey's appointment. So I need somebody on that side to motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Right, because they're not separated.
Yeah, on appointment.
549.
549.
Thank you.
So motion to reconsider. This was 5, Appointment 549.
Which one's that?
It needs to be separated.
We can't reconsider it. There's no one on the prevailing side.
Well, the prevailing side was no, right? No, no one. So I think you can do it. Okay.
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 Counsel Lane?
On the motion to reconsider, yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Grantis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. So motion to...
Waive Rule 7F.
Yeah. And I second that.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Lane?
To take this out of committee, yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Grantis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
No.
Counsel Cameron?
No.
Thank you.
I'll just make one good of the order. The firefighters' memorial service is this upcoming Sunday, June 8, 8:15, at the Newburyport Fire Department headquarters. And the chief had let us know about that a few weeks ago, so. And it's a great breakfast, and it's a nice, nice, nice way to pay our respects and thanks to them. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Master and Alot, Chapter 30, Section 21A1, and we would not return into open session at the conclusion. And the purpose would be to approve executive session minutes regarding the library investigation from May 1, 2025, and May 12. And the purpose, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of all complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual.
So moved. Second.
Okay. A motion made by Counsel Zied and seconded by Counsel Lane. Thank you. Roll call. And again...
Counsel Khan's hand is up. I think she's asking if she has to leave.
Rules to allow remote participation.
Yeah, and also to allow remote participation. Thank you. Forgot about that. Okay. Roll call.
Just point of order, Ms. President. Are we going to go into a different Zoom room just before we go in and then lose each other?
Oh, yeah.
So Counsel, you're uncomfortable. Maybe you start a meeting and then send Counsel Khan the link, and she could join?
Counsel Khan, I can start another meeting, and I'll email you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I could also drop, I could also drop, I mean, if that's serious.
That might be at this point. I had not anticipated that. Yeah.
So I will drop from remote, and I will, so I will just drop, and I don't need to be part of the jury, right? So I'll just drop now. All right.
All right. So we'll do the roll call, though? Did we just do the roll call?
No.
So the waiver of the rules is out.
Thanks for keeping me on track. If you need to... Counsel Khan has left the meeting at 9:36. Roll call.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Grantis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. All right. Thank you. We'll turn off the Zoom. Thank you, everyone.